Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to April 24th, 2019, meeting of the Danville-Boll County Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for your presence. We appreciate your taking interest in our, in the business of Danville-Boll County Planning and Zoning. We'll begin in prayer. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank thee with this most beautiful day and all the blessings of it. We thank thee for this community we live in, this country we live in. Thank thee for the safety and protection you've granted us. Thank thee for the freedoms that we enjoy. Continue to pray for our servicemen and women who defend those freedoms. You would bless, protect, and bring them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. Be with us as commissioners today as we make decisions that will affect this community and the individuals that are here, and we pray that these decisions will be for the betterment for all involved. Continue to watch over and care for us. God, guard, direct us in all things. Praying in Christ's name, amen. Couple of announcements this morning. Mary Beth touched on, this is her last meeting, and she is taking a position with EDP. Is that right, Mary Beth?
I'm doing some contract work.
Right. And so, this is her last meeting. We want the public to say thank you. We appreciate your, your work and your help and just being a member of Planning and Zoning. Thank you for everything you've done. We appreciate everything you've done. And then, secondly, we have a new member from Perriville, Mrs. Anne Sleet. Anne, we'd like to welcome you and thank you for agreeing to serve on planning and zoning. And you'll get your feet wet real quick, I'm sure. But anyway, we want to say hello and thank you for taking that position, and we're glad to have you. Okay? Thank you. Item C, approval minutes, March 27th, 2019.
Take a motion to approve.
Oh, I got one thing.
Question, me too.
All of these say chairman instead of commissioner. Do we need to make that change?
Yeah, that's what I saw, too.
Each, each, one that, each motion says it was made by chairman so-and-so instead of commissioners or so.
Commissioner.
So that needs to be corrected.
Okay.
But I think with that correction, I don't like the motion that we approved.
Jeff makes a motion. We approve with the corrections of from chairman to commissioners as worded in the minutes, then seconds. Question, discussion on a motion to approve as amended. Hearing not all in favor, vote unanimous. Item D, financial report, March 2019.
Yeah, I'm gonna make one minor comment, something I just want to point out. The Budget Committee has met. We're gonna talk about that later. But on the third page of the finance report, well, let me see here where that is. No, second page, I'm sorry. Just want to point out something on an expense item, just to give you guys a heads up. Well, I'll take that back. I think it's on the third. Let me see where that is. Yeah, third page, I'm sorry. Third page, last page of the finance report. Under dues and memberships, you guys see that percent of budget, 406%? We're kind of way over budget. Let me explain to you what that is. We're gonna fix the, we're gonna amend the budget to address that. But our dues and memberships were budgeted 280, and that year-to-date, we're at 1,135. That's actually our QuickBooks subscription that renews every year. It was sort of, it just sort of hits our bank account once a year. We thought that was going away when we signed the contract with our accounting firm, because we're now using their QuickBooks program. But for some reason, QuickBooks hit us again for this year, so we're trying to get that reversed. So, we put that in dues and memberships, because we didn't know what else to call the QuickBooks subscription. But it's the 2019 renewal, $675. So, that's why that kind of blew that budget category out there, and we're gonna amend the budget to address it, but we're trying to get it reversed, because we no longer are using our, our version of QuickBooks. So, looks weird when you look at the percentages, percent of budget. Shouldn't see too many things that are 400%, especially one above. But that's why it's so high. I'm glad to answer any questions on that. Anything else on the finance report?
Questions, discussion on the budget report. Make a motion, we approve. Terry moves, we approve.
No, second.
Suzie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item A, construction insurances.
Yeah, again, like every month, that, that item is in your packet. It's just a review, no vote needed. But I do want to point out Maple Tree Place. We actually got bids, or getting bids from contractors. The city is gonna take a lead role in that project with hope that it's completed here pretty soon. So, they're actually, they've scoped the project. They've put quotes out for bids. The contractor's already called back and clarifying some things in the bids, but the goal is to get that built and finished, and then we'll actually reimburse the city for that one, because they'll be taking the lead role. And then, on Center Estate, Berry Metcalf down there at the bottom, $13,500. Again, city's gonna take a lead role on the completion of that project. The materials have already been ordered, are already on the site, and then the city's looking for a contractor to finish out what's left of that drainage and sidewalk portion of that, too. So, hopefully, we get those two projects done soon and get those off our escrow. And then, Fox, Fox Gate is pretty easy. That's just working with KU to finish the streetlights on half of that subdivision. Should be pretty easy, but it's turning out to be a little more complicated on how we get them to do those on our behalf. We can't go out and install those and then, for example, send KU a bill. We have to actually have them do, give us the authority, and then they do it, and then we'll, then we'll pay them. So, hopefully, we get a few of those done. But there's no action we need you guys to do on those.
What about the Hunt Farm?
Hunt Farm, sidewalks are moving on. I went out there this week, actually, and looked. Two more houses are under construction. Just a couple more pieces are lacking. Mr. Sharp could file for a reduction right now if he wanted, because he's built several sections, but I guess he's just waiting to get them all done, and then we'll basically write him a check back for the remainder of the sidewalk bond that we're holding.
Was it Center Estates that we had that sidewalk issue with a while back?
We did, we did, and it was constructed, but at the very end, there's a handrail that was needed, and it wasn't, the transition to the trailer park drive entrance still lacked a little bit of a better engineering, and that's why the city requested the bond of $13,500. It was to put a pipe under the road, and then we need to do some kind of safety fix for that sidewalk where it drops off into the, where the water's flowing across the road where that pipe comes out. Sidewalk's in pretty good shape.
But nothing's happened with it or what?
Item L, subdivision approvals. Raymond Float, Mike Curtis, subdivision on 1.301 acres, Highway 127 and zero U.S., Junction City.
I'll go through these plats pretty quick, and Nancy's here, Dale's here. I don't see Kendall. This first one is advantage engineering. Kendall Wise, technical review, looked at all six plats, reviewed them all. They all met our requirements with some minor corrections, but I'll just walk you through. This first one is interesting. It's in Junction City, and it relates to a lot of things we've been talking about recently. Right now, in Junction City, we do not have a zoning ordinance, nor do we have a zoning map. So, when the plat first came in, as you wouldn't expect, there were setbacks, there were zoning, labeling, but none of those apply, because technically, we have no zoning in Junction City. This is the first plat we're looking at since they've come back in, and all we're doing is taking a little piece down there along 127 at the end of Marcus Drive. We're taking a little piece off Mr. Curtis' property and adding it to Mr. Float's property. There is a project under construction at that, on that property. But interesting enough, it wouldn't have matched the zoning. Just to give you a kind of example, that property was zoned residential, and we got a commercial building going up, but there's no zoning. So, there's no zoning today, there's no setbacks. The gentleman building the commercial building is gonna extend Marcus Drive into this property. It'll be a private travelway, but it'll match the street, curb, gutter, sidewalks. He's gonna construct all of that. There's also a plat adsement there that lets Mr. Curtis get to his frontage. So, the street's gonna appear to go all the way into the property, but it'll stop where you see on the plat where Marcus Street stops right now, and then it'll be a private driveway into Mr. Float's property, and Mr. Curtis will have an easement. Yes, sir.
If there is no zoning, how can we?
This is all subdivision reg stuff. So, the legal interpretation was, when they came back in through the interlocal agreement, the subdivision regs took authority countywide with their reenact, or resigning of the interlocal agreement. The zoning ordinance, though, will take action by the city of Junction City to adopt a new zoning map and adopt a new zoning ordinance. So, we have subdivision regulations. We have an active comprehensive plan, but we don't have a-
Does that affect the issue with the two different zones?
Well, right now, there are no zones, technically. We're just making it as a reference. When you look at the old map, you see that things are, Mr. Curtis' property, for example, was zoned highway commercial, and this was zoned residential. But since the zoning map is gone, there is no zoning. We're looking at the old map as just a reference point. Again, until we all agreed, everything sort of evaporated with the court case. The assumption was, there was zoning, there were subdivision regs, and the city was managing those independently. After all that interpretation, it was, all those things went away in 2011, 2009, whenever, and so, there's no zoning. So, we're gonna have to re, so, we've been doing this piecemeal. They came back in, new interlocal agreement, new member. Subregs are now in play. Comprehensive plan's been adopted by the city, the new comprehensive plan. The next step is to get the flume adopted. They need to get a future land use map, and then we gotta get them a zoning map and a zoning ordinance. And then, they'll be back on par with the rest of the county. So, for the time being, there's no rules down there.
So, I'm just kind of-
You could build apartments, yeah, anywhere. You could build a commercial building.
But we can make some kind of a zoning or a planning decision on something that doesn't exist?
Well, this is just a dimensional plat. We're just cutting one piece to another, which all that authority rests in the subdivision regulations.
So, the zoning of it, would be pertinent if it did have zoning?
If, if it did, it'd been an issue, it needed a zone change, or the commercial building would have not been the best idea. We've had some folks call us about other things. Hey, I'm thinking about some apartments over here, and I might do this. And right now, there's, there's no setbacks, there's no zoning, there's no sign rules. We're, we're getting there. It's on our to-do list, but we gotta get the future land use map amended first. And in the interim, we're just in this kind of law where there's no zoning. So, there's, this is a dangerous period. But funny enough, it's a good-looking building. He did talk over with the city, talked with the city and let them know, and everyone seems to support what's happening on this property, as far as I can tell, in the community.
So, it's commercial?
It's, it's gonna be a commercial building, a, a non-machine shop, kind of a mechanical related business that's gonna be there. It's just the plat today.
Other questions? Motion?
Move, we approve.
Jim moves, we approve.
One second.
Terry seconds. Question, discussion on a motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you. Number two, Gary Pollard, Jill Hardwick, subdivision, 1.135 acres, 5414 Lexington Road.
Alrighty. Nancy's here, if we have any questions. But this one's pretty easy, as you go out Lexington Road, almost to the county line, get to the lake. The Hardwick property is there. What's happening is they're buying a little sliver from the Pollard property. Just 0.45 acres is being added on the east side of the Hardwick property, west side of the Pollard property to be added. The existing easements are being reestablished on, with this plat. Again, not much there. The new Hardwick pieces will be 1.135 acres. Again, just buying a little sliver on that. Nancy's here, if you guys have any questions.
Hearing none, we need a motion. Joe moves, Jeff moves, we approve. Jeff moves, we approve. Then seconds. Question, discussion on a motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Number three, Roger Chadwell, subdivision, approval, one acre, Tank Pond Road.
Again, SS plat, went through technical review. We're basically cutting off a one-acre track off Tank Pond Road off the farm for an existing mobile home that's on the property. You can see the setback lines, platted at 50 is our requirement for one acre ag tracks. Five-acre ag tracks, it's 75-foot building setback line. It's exactly one acre. Everything's already on the property. We're just creating a lot for an existing structure on the property. I'm sure you guys all, I don't know if you guys drive to all the sites, probably not, but Tank Pond's a pretty cool road. That's the first time I sort of made that loop.
It is.
It is. It actually is.
Motion, we approve.
Terry moves, we approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on a motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item four, Jack Shipley, subdivision, 98.387 acres, 1811 Dry Fork Road, Danville.
Alrighty, this is Shipley Farm at the end of Dry Fork Road. Again, Nancy SS is here with SS Engineering, and y'all know we love Nancy to death, but we gotta pick her on a little bit on this plat. We, we gave her a hard time in technical review. This is a very busy plat. And the reason is, because we're cutting the farm into several tracks, and she put all the calls on there. We, we talked about this for a little while, what the, what the family wanted to do, and we brought it in. She brought it in initially without the calls. It was nice and clean, you can see all the lots. But unfortunately, to put all this property on one plat, get all those calls on there with the bends of the property, you can see Dry Fork Road. I can tell you, all six lots do have their frontage requirement of 40-foot. It's hard to see, but they're all labeled nice and clean, Track A, B, C, D, E, and it shows the acreages. But it gets really messy, because we're all tying into the end of the road with all these farm tracks, and you've got all those calls for all the road center lines, edge of the property bends, and so, it's pretty messy. But she's here, if you guys have any questions. I can go through the acreages of the five tracks if you want. A is 14.2, B is 10.0, C is 10.1, D is 19.8, E is 33.3, and F is 10.816. And really, no long-term plan, other than the, the family's cutting up the farm for future development options.
So, how many new lots will this add?
It's taken the farm into six.
That isn't the one that I brought in Monday.
No, this got mailed out before. Yeah, you brought in a revised, corrected one.
There is a revised plat on Track A. What acreage do you all have on that?
14, 207. We mailed it out a week ago.
Yeah, but it has been changed. Track A is now 13 acres. That was, that was a plat that was brought in Monday, the revised plat.
I understand.
So, there is a revised plat that'll go out to them, and it's, it's, Track A is 13 acres and some change, and the other one is a little over, is a little over more than what's all shown on it.
A and C swapped that.
They moved the line.
Lisa's got the final plats up there that she just turned in.
So, there is a change from what you've got, what you said.
So, where does Track C have frontage?
Track C has frontage. You see the shaded area that kind of looks like it goes, yeah, that's its frontage.
So, that's a driveway?
Track C is, there is a note that says, um, Track, let me, let me see again. Okay. That's alright. If you look over on, that's, that's not on there. Okay. Track D has the right, no, Track D or B, I'm not sure which one, has the right of ingress and egress over Track C, and that's the shaded area. Then, Track F has the right of ingress and egress over Track E, as shown, and that's the shaded area there also. And it is not the easiest thing to do.
It's not a lot of calls on it.
It, it, it's very busy. There's a note on the plat that says that Track D has the right of ingress and egress across Track C along the shaded area. Track F has the right of ingress and egress across Track E along the shade area, as shown here on also. That's the way Mr. Shipley wanted. They do have road frontage, but there is some creeks and things in that area that they want to be able to not build bridges over.
So, they're sharing access, but all the lots have their legal frontage, but they're sharing driveways for some of the trucks?
That's correct.
Which meets our rules.
Does, does Track E have it going a different road, or does it?
No, they all, they all have, have 40-foot of road.
It just says the end of county.
C, D, E, and F all have 40-foot of road frontage on Dry Fork.
E is right, your questions are good, same way we had, see it comes, so they've got 40-foot right there. So, the lot is shaped like this. So, it's got this odd little, this tag, and that's, and that's, yeah, and so, they touch here, they touch there. That one touches here, yeah. Very busy plat. Yeah, we gave Nancy a hard time in technical review on this one a little bit.
I gave everybody else a hard time.
Yeah, well, you do that every month.
Yeah, but I gave my people a hard time with calls up.
Are we technically correct then at this point?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we are.
Question.
Move, we approve.
Terry moves, we approve.
One second.
We're approving the-
Jim seconds. Discussion.
Yeah, we're changing that.
Yeah, we're changing, here's the original, or the newest, yeah. Any other questions or discussion?
Do we have a second?
Yep, you did. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item five, Jennifer Fire Tag, Fry Tag, Free Tag, has a plat approved, subdivision, 194.74 acres on Highway 150 Perriville.
Yep, so, this is going west of town. Things echoing a little bit. This is going west of town towards Perriville on 150, and we're cutting off a four-acre track off the farm for the Fry Tag property, and pretty straightforward here, four-acre cut, meets all our requirements. Interesting to note, property owner's from Stony Brook, New York, pretty far away. Vince just must, you just raised him, you must've been there, know about it, alright? So, this property owner's from out of state, and again, the plat was submitted and meets all our requirements. AGE's here, Dale's here, if you guys have any questions.
Suzie moves, we approve. Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on a motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. And number six, James Susan Reynolds, subdivision, 14.318 acres, 526 Mitchell Lane, Danville.
Yep, again, another AG plat. Dale's here, if you guys have any questions, but we're cutting off a 14-acre, 14.318 acre track off the parent farm on Mitchell Lane. Again, you can see it, they referenced some barns and ponds and a building to be removed, the little building that's on, that'd be on the property line. Looks good. Everything's on the plat that we required. Met all our requirements.
Motion to approve.
Jeff moves, we approve. Suzie seconds. Question, discussion on a motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you. Item G, public hearing, Old Shakertown Road. File application of rezoned property on tract of land containing 4.190 acres at 707 Shakertown Road, Danville. Hold Shakertown Road, Danville.
Alright, I'll start off, though. They're gonna make sure this pointer works, so we can get the map up there. Alrighty. We had an application filed on April 3rd, 2019. We've got several folks, I think, here that are related to this application. Just a quick background, you guys remember, this zone change and the flume amendment was filed in January of 2019. The flume amendment went forward and was successful from low density to moderate density. The zone change had a fairly light discussion, but a discussion, a lot of it centered around traffic and density and design. It was tabled with the directive that the applicant get a traffic study, and it sat tabled for a month or so, and then was actually withdrawn formally, and then was refiled first of April here, or on April 3rd, to hit this meeting. So, again, it was withdrawn and refiled, was refiled with the traffic study that you guys had in your packet. The traffic study was slightly revised, or some new versions at some of your seats. I'm not sure we had enough for everyone. Couple minor changes, and the traffic engineer can go through that. Basically, some graphs put on pages three and four, but the traffic study did go out in your packet, and most of the information there is, is still the same. And, a new concept plan was submitted. That was in your staff report. At the request, you guys wanted to see a more detailed concept plan, and that was also submitted. So, we're back for the same request that was tabled and withdrawn in January. The applicant is Old Shakertown Road LLC, and I'm gonna work off the staff report and just walk you through some procedural things, and then the applicant's here with legal counsel, and I believe there's some neighbors here also. The location of property, again, 707 Old Shakertown Road. Current zoning, as you guys remember, is this property, it's not gonna work. Whoops, let's see what's going off the city's thing here. The pointer, there it is. This is the property we're talking about, and it's split zone currently, has GRA on part of it and agriculture in the back. It's 4.19 acres, and the zoning history, again, is interesting. The original zoning was agriculture. Property, again, has two zoning districts, split zoned, that you can see goes across several pieces of farmland through there. The existing, the flume designation now is moderate density. As you guys remember, there was a flume amendment done on the property. We took some pictures, but I'm gonna jump to it. The future land use map was amended successfully, so it's now moderate density, kind of between two multifamily districts, but we have moderate density and multifamily on two sides, low density kind of all around this area. Again, that's the flume. And turning to page two of your staff report, Article 18.10 of the zoning ordinance, again, requires that the developers submit conditions or a concept plan. You did get a concept plan in your packet. That's it up there on the, the board, but you got a nice closer view at your seat. And it shows, this concept plan shows 62 units on the four acres. It also shows the existing house would be staying, and it would become an administrative building or clubhouse with some guest parking located around it. So, again, this is different from what you saw before, and again, this is just the concept plan, and it's interesting to note, this isn't a site plan. Pieces would have to move if this was successful. This doesn't show everything that would be required in the development of this scale. There'd still be landscaping and dumpsters and other things that go with the development. This is just a concept plan to give the planning commission, according to the applicant, a good understanding of where the pieces would be for the building types and how many units would be on the property and how the parking would work. The applicants had those four, they had five conditions that were submitted prior. The four of those are still relevant. The traffic study was one of the conditions that they would do one if needed. You all asked them to do one, and they did one, and it's in your packet. The other conditions basically said, prior, that the building heights would be two stories, the maximum number of units would be 67. They've still, and they have that on their concept plan, they're asking for a maximum of 67 units, but they're showing you 62. And I'll let them explain kind of the thinking behind that, but I think they're just giving themselves some wiggle room. Once they get into site design, they could figure out to achieve a number of units. There is a good chance, maybe they couldn't do 62 even, but I think this is just to give you an idea how the buildings would lie, how the parking and travelways would lay out, and where that house would fit in the development that they're planning to retain. The other condition related to a single point of entry, and that's shown on the concept plan, and then the exteriors materials for the buildings. Those are same as the last time. Comprehensive plan- Comprehensive plan compliance starts on page four, and as you know, we look at our goals and objectives, and we looked at the general land development goals, community facilities, land use, I won't go through all the details, but those are on page four and five. And then on page five, we get into our flume in chapter nine, our future land use map. And again, this is the flume category now, which is moderate density that was revised. I wanna point out, at the bottom of page five, under the map that you see on the screen, we also have development review provisions that will, that work kinda in concert with, with the future land use map in the entire comprehensive plan. And it says in that first sentence, under development review conditions, requested rezonings, zone changes shall be reviewed for consistency with the future land use map and the development provisions listed below. So if you turn the page on your staff report, there's another paragraph that I'm gonna point out to you guys, that's right there at the top, it says, "All proposals for new development must be assessed to determine their compatibility with existing surrounding development. Compatibility may be shown because the proposed use is the same as the surrounding development, or it may be established by site design, buffering, control of access through adjacent neighborhood, or other agreed upon development measures." So what our comprehensive plan says is, we look at our map, but we also look at compatibility, and we look what the applicant's proposing, everything doesn't have to be the same, but there has to be compatibility achieved either through, it is the same, either density or look, or through buffering, site design, other aspects. And then we gen, and then we actually have some new policies that we did last summer, general guidance for residential. Some of these don't apply, but the first one related to a traffic study, and the traffic study was done. The second one deals with residential density and adjacent developments. The third one's really an N A, that's really for subdivisions, bigger subdivisions. The fourth one says residential develop, neighborhoods must be protected from adverse impacts from proposed developments, again, that comes through normally our development conditions. And the last two deal with high density residential development, this doesn't really meet our definition of high density, but it mentions that we should be close to major roads, and we shouldn't develop on major slopes, or we need to be connected to sewer, which this will be. And then at the bottom of page six, we talk about our future land use map, that we use it, we follow it, how we look at applications, and, and then I'll sorta wrap up here. On page seven, I just wanna point out a few things, again, their proposal to rezone on four point one nine zero acres from A R one and G R A to N C C, Neighborhood Conservation Classification, which allows single-family duplex or multifamily with a maximum of sixty-seven units. The concept plan, again, shows sixty-two townhome style units, office and clubhouse and associated parking, sixty-two units on four point one zero nine acres calculates to a proposed density of fourteen point seven nine seven units per acre, and the future land use map is designated as moderate density. And again, moderate density consists of areas developed for higher density, single-family detached, single-family semi-attached, patio homes, small lot homes, multifamily, et cetera, duplexes, townhomes, apartment buildings, and those density ranges should be from five dwelling units an acre to sixteen dwelling units per acre. And again, the only real staff item of concern was the traffic study, we got it in draft form, we gave it to the city engineer to review, he's reviewed it, he says it's technically correct, everything in the traffic study looks good to the city, I, I don't have anything in writing, but met with Earl Coffey this morning, and he even read the revised version that came in yesterday, and he said it looked good to him. So again, the traffic study shows little to no impact, and the engineer can explain what all the traffic study did. They studied from the light at Lexington Avenue, all the way through the access points to this development, on both ends. And again, no other staff items of concern, and at the bottom of page seven, is Charis one hundred two one three, on how you guys are supposed to make your findings, and you guys know that. The rest of the staff report was the traffic study and the canned motions at the very end of the staff report, on the very last page, the up or down motions we put in there for you guys. Again, the applicant's present with his legal counsel, and there's some neighbors here, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys might have of the staff, related to anything in the staff report, or anything about the project at this point.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On one of these guidance for residential development, you said, did the third bullet really apply to subdivisions?
I might've looked at those wrong, but, yeah, go ahead.
Well, so the electric telephone and.
Yeah.
C A T V utility should be placed underground, that's not a requirement?
That, that policy really, when you start, it, it really is, residential development should have streetlights, curb, gutter, sidewalks, I mean, the lead-in of that bullet really relates to subdivision development, someone was coming in with a new hundred lot subdivision, this is our general, and again, these are shoulds, not shalls. Obviously, we're not building streets, you know, there's not a plan for a public, but then that second one, underground, electric telephone, again, cable, should be placed underground, most of the time, that's gonna happen in a project like this, I'm not even sure there'll be phone, but that isn't a hard policy, I'd say applies to a four lot development, if we're doing a fourplex or apartments, but we let the applicant describe how they see the infrastructure going in. The tricky thing on that is, it's a policy directive, at this point, we're not even far enough along doing engineering or know how the design would work on the property. But as you look around most apartment complexes that are built, you don't typically see a lot of overhead lines, going building to building, they're, they're utilizing, you know, ground placed electrical boxes and things of that nature, but this policy's really trying to catch new subdivisions that we don't get overhead lines, overhead utilities, making sure that they understand we want streets, curb, gutter, sidewalks, all that Any other questions that you guys have for me? The applicant's here, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to turn it over to them, or you want me just to?
Yeah, no, this being a public hearing, we have an opportunity to speak for and against this zone change request, and we, again, for those that'd like to speak in favor of the zone change request, please come to the mic, introduce yourself by name, address, and share with us, and we will proceed. Anyone else speak in favor?
I will step forward, Melanie Thornberry, I am the attorney for the applicant, and so I just want to add to what Mr. Hunter has provided to you all in your staff report, and that is that when you visualize Danville and Boyle County as a whole, and you consider where there are locations of moderate density housing such as this type, what first comes to mind is the area of Periville Road and what I would call the Harrodsburg Road, out there across from the Boyle County schools. There are townhomes there, that is an area of moderate density, multifamily, residential. Periville Road, Harrodsburg Road are two major arteries for our community that feed to other communities. You've also got the area of southern, southern Danville, over there Denmark Drive, the area kinda behind Kroger and that, Junction City as you travel south, those areas also have some multifamily, what I would call moderate density housing options for people, again, along a major artery to neighboring communities. We do not have that type of housing on our northern side of town. Our Planning and Zoning Commission has done a good job historically of preventing major development on those corridors. However, as you drive out Third Street, Shakertown Road, you see Danville changing from its center of town with single family that's very close together into neighborhoods, and feeding now to our new bypass, our newest stretch of bypass, as well as the one that connects over to Harrodsburg Road, again, being three major arteries that actually serve areas that I would venture to say a large number of our residents travel, and potentially travel to their places of employment while choosing to live in our county. You're going to Harrodsburg, you're going to Lawrenceburg, you are going to Bergen, you're going out to the lake, you are going thirty-four leading into northern Garrett County, and also Jasmine County in Lexington. So I think that when you all look at the future land use and the comprehensive plan, this location is ideal, both where it is located in relation to its surrounding areas of subdivision, duplexes in front of it, duplexes next to it, this is a wonderful opportunity to do a zone change that allows for infill of an appropriate use and an appropriate density to service a part of our county that doesn't have a lot to offer in, in that type of housing. And I wanted to specifically draw your all's attention to that, because I think that is a very compelling reason to approve this particular zone change. Other than that, I think that Mr. Hunter has covered the statutory requirements, your all's requirements, the engineer who conducted the traffic study is here to answer any questions you may have of a technical nature, because I know that I am not qualified to answer those. And one of the members of the LLC is also here, should you all have any questions for him. Yes?
Yes, Jim.
I have a question. I drove around the property to the left, and there are approximately forty places for families to live, on about double the land, so it's a density, if, if you compared it to the land you're applying for, it would be about twenty areas for twenty families to live, and then according to our guidelines, you're allowed to go fifty percent up, so that would be roughly thirty units, and you're applying for sixty-two, do you have an explanation of how you're meeting our guidelines? Because if you look around it, there's lots of open space, and then you're very, very dense in the middle of it, and I agree with you that it's a great place to expand Danville's housing, but what I'm questioning is the density you're putting in.
Right, right, and I, and I do understand your question, I would offer you this, I am not certain how long Nicholas Terrace has been there, I, I, I don't know. Nicholas Terrace is made up of duplexes, and then the other adjoining property, that's sort of that pocket there on the right-hand side, is also three duplexes. What my clients are proposing are townhomes, so I think that in and of itself is going to visually look different. I would also say that our plan as written does say that this designation, the flume designation of moderate density, allows for, and it gives a wide range there, of five to sixteen units per acre. So my clients have shown what would appear as the high end of that, this is not as Mr. Hunter pointed out, this is not their site plan, this is just conceptual to allow you all to have the visual of what the high end of that looks like. But what you all are tasked with is to approve the zone change, which contains that range, with the exact number to be determined as they move forward in the planning and the specific site plan, which also has to come back for approval. And I think it's always safer to show somebody the high end of what you're looking at, rather than the low end. You can get, I guess, the surprise of, whoa, that's what that looks like now, rather than on down the road. But there's no, there's nothing that says right now that my client intends to put the entire sixty-two on there, that is what fit with the space there within the framework of the plan that they are showing you. They have also looked at lesser numbers, and they're not opposed to, they certainly would consider lesser numbers, this is simply to provide you all with that conceptual plan as you decide whether or not to approve the actual zone change. I hope that.
What, there's nothing to prevent them from doing that either, is that correct?
Not until you get to the site plan phase, but the ordinance itself reads, as it reads, five to sixteen units per acre. So when you approve that change, you are approving that range, and then once you get to the site plan stage, you would see specifically what it is that they are proposing.
So would your client agree to the lesser numbers, the condition for the zone change?
I believe that they have talked about that and are amenable to considering that, yes. It's a matter of, you know, hearing what the commission's concerns are, and what the commission's thoughts are on that, in order to provide a starting point. I actually have, Mr. Galloway, who prepared this, brought with him today a, excuse me, my papers are gonna fall here, a re, a, a second version of this that shows, how many, Luther, fifty? Fifty-one. And I've got extra copies here, and would be happy if you want for comparison purposes to see what that looks like. I can pass that to you.
I think so, I would like to see more green space around them, the max of green space in the area on both sides, but.
Right. And of course, as Mr. Hunter mentioned, that, you know, the site plan in and of itself is what will show landscaping, buffering, green space, what you all see.
Thank you.
Just to compare the visual.
Commissioner Boyd, I might, might add, just for your information, I did go ahead and calculate those densities to the adjacent properties, and, and I wanna point this out, that policy directive is a should, not a shall, number one, and number two, I think this is exactly why you guys are the planning commission. I think you have to determine when compatibility matters, and when sometimes it can be watered down a little bit. I think the challenge we have here is, we do have duplexes on two sides of the property, but we also have two sides of the property that are still in agriculture use, basically, or residential. Duplexes in a modern time aren't the best use of land, again, there are thirty-seven units next door on nine point eight seven acres, you can see there's land that they didn't utilize on some of that in the middle, and typically, you don't see a lot of folks come in and do duplex development on large scale on one lot like you used to. So that land use is changing. You have three duplexes on the, the right side of the property, which are on less than an acre, actually, less than seven tenths of an acre, that calculates to almost nine units to the acre, the housing authorities is three point seven units to the acre. So if you use the fifty percent kinda policy directive, you've got nine on one side, three on the other, one on one piece property, and zero on the other. So again, as far as how you all evaluate that policy, it says, we look at all properties around us, and we should not exceed density of fifty percent. Where this thing really is gonna come to test someday is when we're building subdivisions, and you have one acre subdivisions on one side, quarter acre on this, and the guy's coming in to do small lot subdivisions, that's when we start to really have to address that compatibility of those lot sizes. In this case, the lot size is four acres, the lot size next door is five acres, so the lot sizes are similar, the unit counts of those still fall in that fifty percent. So you just gotta look at all sides and make a judgment call, it's really what you have to make, are, is that fifty percent hard and fast for some of you guys, is it somewhat a, a moving target? But the unit types, not to confuse, it is multifamily next to multifamily, and it is infill development that one policy directs, and then the other policy says we shouldn't be over fifty percent. So you guys are right in the same place you need to be at, which are how many units or too many units for this particular piece of property versus another four acre piece of property somewhere else in town. And that's a judgment call every single time.
One more question, on this revised plat at the bottom facing Old Shakertown Road, looks like three driveways or something, are, are those actually units, or are those?
I haven't seen the revised one, so I'll let the applicant address that.
Are you having the front of the building space, Old Shakertown Road?
I'm gonna let Mr. Galloway, the engineer, address that.
The problem we're having getting into this.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm Luther Galloway.
Yeah.
With A G, with, with A G E Engineering.
Thank you.
Okay. The problem we're having is getting into this, into this much detail, you're way ahead of, of design, okay? We don't know where utilities are going, we, we've got, we've, we've got electric, natural gas, water, sewer, and one of the big issues nowadays is stormwater, you know, what are we gonna do with stormwater? So there's, there's a whole lot of things to be worked out before we can get down to actual numbers of, of, of units per, for this, for this plan, okay? In addition to that, you know, the, the owners have to look at demographics, you know? One thing that, that were, that, or the original plan, the sixty-two plan that you had there showed all two-story townhomes, okay? Well. Well, as all of you know, some of us are getting up in years, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at, we sure don't want to do a lot of stairs, you know, to, in our, in our house. So, you know, one of the things that they're gonna have to look at is, are we gonna have some one-story units? Well, if you go to one-story units, you automatically cut that number in half, okay? This alternate plan that we've got, and those you're seeing in front there are actually one-story units. So we've actually shown, I think, we've shown forty-six two-story units and five one-story units on this particular plan. And I'm thinking that probably in, in, when they get that far into figuring out the demographics of what they're, of the target group that they're going to go after as far as renting these units, they're gonna be looking at some one-story units for handicap, elderly, and so forth, you know, especially in the development of this size. So that's what you're seeing there in the front. Now, we have moved, we've moved the, some of the units out in the front there on this one to give you more green space, basically a front yard. That original plan had some, had some of those units with the actual back of the units facing Shaker Town, Old Shaker Town Road. We've taken those out in this plan. Now, we're gonna have to have some room for stormwater detention, we're gonna have to have some room for other utilities. So, you know, this is probably, you know, the sixty-two, in my opinion, will never be built, because I don't think we can get that many units on the property and get everything else in that we have to do. But, you know, this is another option, this is basically another concept, if you wanna look at it like that, that some of the other issues that we've got to look at before we actually come to determine the actual number of units that's gonna be on the property. Does that answer your question?
Sort of.
Okay, what's the rest of it?
This drawing right here, is it showing parking places or units?
Yes, that's parking. That's a driveway parking.
All right.
To the front of the units.
And the same on the other side. So now, in this concept, you have both sets of units that face Old Shaker Town Road, the front of the building facing Old Shaker Town Road.
The front door will face Old Shaker Town Road on all, on all those units across that section.
So would your client, as a condition, agree to have those two facing Old Shaker Town Road and this number of units in the concept plan?
Well, I think-
No, I was trying.
You need to answer.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Boyd, ask me that again.
Okay, so the, so the two buildings that face Shaker Town Road-
This is the front.
Right.
This is the front of the buildings.
Part, front of it facing Old Shaker Town Road.
We've taken the ones that backed up.
They're showing the front of the building facing Old Shaker Town Road, which is much more appealing to me. And then if you limit it to that number of units that are shown in that concept plan, it's less than the sixty-two, but if you agree to something like that, I'd be much more in favor of your proposal.
I'm Joe Gay.
I want, I want to see what-
I'm a member of Old Shaker Town LLC.
What Mr. Gay thinks about that, because while, again, while I understand your question, I still think that we're putting the horse before the carriage a bit to speak, in that as Mr. Galloway explained, this, this isn't a site plan phase.
I was just trying to put two conditions on what becomes a site plan. I say this-
So if I'm hearing you correctly, the conditions you're wanting are that those two front buildings would face Old Shaker Town Road.
They are facing it.
Right, but it's, it's a concept plan, Jeff, they don't have to stick with that.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Let me just, Mr. Smith, Henry, could you jump here? At this point, can we put any conditions on this? Are we just looking at approving or disapproving the zone change in and of itself?
There's provision in Chapter eighteen of the zoning ordinance, which lets you put conditions on this, of this nature. It says that when they submit a conceptual development plan, you can ask them to agree to certain elements of that plan. This is an opportunity to do that.
So, and with regard to Jim's question, with regard to which way a building's gonna face, or whether it's gonna be two-story or one-story, or what kind of siding and those kinds of things, can we do that at this point or not?
You, you can ask him to do that at this point, if you think that there's adequate support in the comp plan for making those kinds of demands, if you think there's reasons of neighborhood conformity to make those kinds of demands, and if the developer agrees to it, you can ask them to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's me.
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I think I asked my question.
Can you make a comment?
As a staff, here's what I hope we'll get to. I understand what they're saying, but they also have a condition that says there'll be sixty-seven units, because there's, there's four written conditions, too. I think the best protocol for ours, moving forward, is commit to a cap, just commit to a number. That's the easiest thing to start with. If it's fifty-one, say fifty-one. If it's fifty-two, and you might do forty-eight, that's, if you need a little wiggle room. But if it's not sixty-seven, then let's not commit to sixty-seven and say, trust us, we'll bring you a site plan and we'll figure it out. I prefer a cap, that's, that's general. And then, as our chairman just was alluding to, there could be a condition that building orientations along the road will front the road, without saying which building, how many buildings, how many units, but we want that front building orientation to face the road. That's a general condition, has a lot of wiggle room when we come back and see it later. But I think that's what I'm hearing you say, is we want that first building, if it's one, if it's two-story, one-story, whatever, we want that first building orientation to face the road. As we move back into the property, then whatever.
That's right.
But that, those are general conditions that I think help give us guidance, that when we see the site plan, we can say, hey, they met that condition. I think materials are another one. If you go down that road and said, brick only, well, then we'd understand what we're supposed to see. I think those conditions are fine, and in this case, what I'm hearing is, we need a cap. The other one I think they need to commit to, if they're serious about it, is this house. If we're retaining the house, and appears we are, then that should be a general condition, that the house will remain as an amenity in the development. Because, again, all this is conceptual, and if you go with, well, this is concept and it could change, we could come back and not see the house. We could see the sixty-seven units, they could go to the high end, and we could move the buildings left, right, center, and change all kinds of orientation. So those general kind of written conditions, I think, are important as we move forward and understand what the general tone of this development would be. And the big pieces I see are the houses, it staying for sure? If so, make it condition number five. The building orientation on the front would be one. And then the cap, I just, why dodge this? If it's fifty-one, say fifty-one. If you come back with forty-eight, we understand, but you're not coming back then with sixty-one. If it's sixty-seven or sixty-two, then tell us what that number is. Those would be the type of conditions I think we'd prefer as a staff, as we move forward to the next phase of the site plan.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So, Mr. Boyd, my, my client has indicated they are willing to agree that the building there that fronts on Shaker Town Road would face Shaker Town Road, would be oriented in that direction, and that the fifty-one units that are shown on this conceptual plan, they can do as a cap.
Okay.
I don't know why we would want to restrict what they do with the existing building. Why would we?
Well, I'm trying to figure if that's an amenity or not. They're saying on the concept, they're gonna use as a clubhouse and guest parking. And the guest parking is a positive feature for this many units, we're gonna do parking spaces for you. I like the guest parking. If it goes away, it goes away. I just would like to know, if this is the concept plan, five years later, you pull these out of file, and things change dramatically, they become problematic, and you have concept planning with this detail, and then later on, someone's saying, well, they're supposed to put a house there. Was it, was it there or not? Site plan's the next phase, we might not get it for a year. It might get sold to someone else, and then they take off at this time.
I will say that, being that I do not know the age of this house, the condition of the house, and as you all well know, sometimes, once you get in and start working on an older home, you open a hornet's nest, so to speak. So, from a, from a legal standpoint, I'm reluctant to advise anyone to agree, advise my client to agree to that condition, simply because in capping the number, and then, as Mr. Galloway pointed out, having to, once they know this project can move forward, once they can get a handle on what the demand is for two-story versus one-story, handicap accessibility versus, you know, young couples that are gonna be in and out, it, I would rather leave a cap in place, say that, yes, that building that fronts Old Shaker Town Road will be a building front that will match the rest of Shaker Town Road, but not commit the clients to leaving a home there that we just don't know what, what it is, yes.
I agree with that, but what about the guest parking? Would that be something they would be willing to?
Agree to some guests.
That may be work, something they could work around, their drainage, or whatever.
Yes.
Or just require a common area.
Yes. Because I too agree with the feasibility.
I do too.
And the benefit of having some guest parking.
It makes it better for people to live there. I mean, it just, it does.
You know, what about something as simple as a playground? Is that something you guys would be factoring into the thought, or it's-
Again, I think that's dependent upon-
A lot of guests.
It's a big liability, and it's also dependent upon, again, who's gonna occupy this? I mean, I don't wanna get into a condition that we have a playground there, when it may be a playground that is never used. So I think cap-
What's your definition of a playground?
Pardon?
Don't go there, Jim.
I think capping a number is a very reasonable request, and the, the issue there of the building that fronts on Shaker Town Road being a front is a very reasonable condition.
Vince, you got a question?
Yes, I do. I agree with all the general concepts, but I think, in order to move forward and discuss this, well, we have to hear from the people who maybe have concerns the other way.
We will.
Otherwise, well, but I mean, we need to do it.
I just wanted to address any questions or concerns you all had particularly from my client.
I think they've done a good job presenting that part of it, you know?
Any other questions for clients? Anyone else like to speak in favor of this proposed zone change? Please come to the mic, introduce yourself, name and address. At this time, I'd like to hear from the person that's here to present the traffic survey, if that's possible.
Does everyone have a copy of the revised? These copies not got the fancy covers on it, but it's- Okay. Let me, let me briefly summarize our findings. The, for, for most of you, like myself, have been around Danville for many, many years, you don't see very many traffic jams on Old Shaker Town Road, okay? It's pretty, pretty well open, it's, there's only stop signs at each end, there's not a whole lot of, of traffic on it to begin with. Old Shaker Town Road is basically a level of service A, which is as good as it gets, okay? On the, on the north end, the stop sign there, because most of those cars going to the north end toward, toward Bergen, the Bergen end of the road there, there's a stop sign there, most of those cars are making a left turn. Obviously, when you're making a left turn, the other street is, has through traffic, you gotta wait for a few minutes, or sometimes a few seconds, or maybe even a few minutes to get out. So there, that one has a level, that stop sign has a level of service B, okay, because of that left turn motion, primary left turn motion. The, the south end, going toward, back toward downtown, okay, most of those cars there, seldom does one take a left turn there. They're gonna go the other end of the street to make, to make the left turn. Most of those are right turns, it's a stop sign. Generally, they don't wait, you know? Very seldom do they have to wait, they stop and go, okay? If you look at, at Bergen Road, okay, it's pretty much open, there's no, there's no traffic control devices. The north end is the roundabout with the bypass, pretty much, there's, there's no real traffic congestion there, it pretty much handles anything that comes to it, okay? When you come to the south end, the first restriction is, of course, Lexington Avenue. And everybody knows the intersection of Third Street, Bergen Road, and Lexington Avenue is an issue, okay? So we spent some time looking at that portion of it. Under the, under the revised section there, if you turn to page three, there, we basically have some graphs. Graphs are easy to, easy, so we don't have to talk about a lot of numbers, graphs show you real, in a picture, real quick, what you've got. You see the traffic volume there, total vehicles. On the left side is the number of vehicles for each, and this is, this is at the traffic signal, so that's the number of vehicles that passes through the traffic light, southbound there on Bergen, coming up to Lexington Avenue. In other words, if you're on Bergen Road, heading south toward downtown, you hit the light, this is the number of vehicles that pass through that light on each cycle. We had thirty-one cycles in the peak hour. This is, this is AM. We checked both afternoon and morning rush hours, okay? By far, the morning rush hour is, is the heavier traveled. The afternoon rush hour coming into this intersection is, is not as heavily traveled. Now, if you're looking at North Third Street headed toward Bergen, the afternoon is much worse, but as far as the, what we looked at here, the, we looked at the southbound traffic here in this number. The next graph there basically shows you all the turns. The primary turn, the primary motion for that intersection is right turns. About half of the cars coming in there turn right onto Lexington Avenue. Turn right onto Lexington Avenue, go toward Fourth Street, okay? And the, the third, the graph on page four shows the number of vehicles that have to wait more than one light, and that's when you get into congestion. Anytime, as far as traffic studies are concerned, anytime all the traffic can get through the green light every time it turns green, it's considered a level of service A. In other words, that's about as good as you can get. Put, car pulls up, the light turns green, and they, and they go on. These are the number of vehicles that actually had to wait more than one light. We, we didn't, we determined that no, no vehicles had to wait more than two lights, okay? So all of, all of these vehicles passed within the second green cycle. And as you see there, the, the peak hit right at, right at about eight o'clock in the morning, is what, which is what you would expect. You go on over in this, and then we look at what, what this development, now, this, this report's based on sixty-two units, okay? So, as you know, we probably won't have sixty-two units, but it was based on sixty-two units, thinking that by no means would there ever be anymore. All right. It won't, it won't affect Old Shaker Town Road, it won't affect Bergen Road, except at Lexington Avenue, of course. Looking at the, at the traffic split, there, of course, people aren't living out there yet, so I can't tell you exactly which direction they're gonna be going, north or south, but we, we looked at the existing traffic out there and assumed that those people that are living out there pretty much have the same traffic patterns as the ones that, that would be in this development. So that's an assumption, that we assume what's currently there is what we're, what we're gonna project for this new development, okay? To summarize real quick, what it basically boils down to is during rush hour, which of course is, is the biggest issue, is the only issue really we have there at Lexington Avenue, you would add one vehicle per light change. One vehicle per light change for the traffic there at Shaker Town, or at, at Bergen Road, at Lexington Avenue. Now, that really won't affect the level of service. We identified it as a level of service C now, okay? The, the development here adding one vehicle on, during the peak hour, peak rush hour, one vehicle per light change, per green light, will not affect the level of service, and the level of service will remain level of service C. So, even though it will slightly increase by about, I think, I think the number's about ten percent, I think three hundred and eleven vehicles passed during that hour, and I think we're adding thirty. So about ten percent, just under ten percent of traffic to that light, but as far as the level of service, it will not impact the level of service. All the, all the vehicles should be able to pass through, even at peak time, within two light cycles, as it does now. And that's very briefly what we, what we covered. Any questions? Yes?
Luther, how do you know to add the number you added, when you talked about one vehicle or ten percent? How do you know to do that?
Okay, very briefly, we look at the number of units, there, there is statistical information that tells us how many vehicle trips per day each unit will generate, okay? That's in the study here, if you wanna look it up. So we know how many vehicles will be generated from the sixty-two units that we're looking at, okay, per day, okay? We also know how many of those units will impact the, the peak hour, okay? People getting up in the morning, in this case, getting up in the morning and, and coming out and going to work, okay, primarily is your, is your peak hour demand, okay? Statistics, basically statistically, we know what that number is. Statistics, basically statistically, we know what that number is, based on many, many, many studies over the years, okay? So then, what we did, we took that number and we assumed the split between going north and south would be the same as the traffic that's out there now, okay? So that gives you the actual number that's going to be impacting the Lexington Avenue light during that peak hour. Now, in most places, the peak hour is actually the afternoon hour, the afternoon rush hour, but in this case, it's the morning rush hour that's, that's the determining factor on our control here, okay? Any other questions?
So in summary, for at most, one vehicle per light change, based on 62 units, and we're only going to have 51 now, the most impact Danville would see for having 51 more new homes is one, one car per light change.
Or, or less.
Only at peak time?
Yes. That's correct.
Any other questions from the commission with regard to the traffic study? Hearing none, thank you, Vince. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the requested zone change? Hearing none, anyone like to speak in opposition? Please come to the mic, introduce yourself, name and address.
Yeah, that shows Third Street, yeah. My name is Jacqueline Stigall, and I own property right next door, right there. Thank you. I, I guess I'm between a yes and a no here. My, when I came before you before, my issues were the traffic and the water runoff. There's a creek in front of my house that gets a lot of trash, and the, I've forgotten what the, the third one's not even important now. But I do, my concern is the number of units that they are going to put on four acres of land. I'm not naive enough to think that that land will never be developed, but I think whatever, 62, 51, whatever, is too much for that little piece of land. That's my opinion. Also, on the traffic study, I guess this is a question for you to answer. My concern was not Third Street and Lexington Avenue, it's when you come down Third Street and you're going to turn left to get your, to your house. People coming from 33 going south in front of my house, and I observe this all the time, they go more than the speed limit. And if you are sitting there wanting to turn left onto Old Shakertown Road, that's where your, your problems might come in. There may be more accidents. I just, anyway, I, I just think that you are the expert, and I feel even inadequate asking you about this, but I think the traffic study should have been on down the hill. If we have 50 houses in there, 50 units, that could potentially be 100 cars. Most families have two cars now. I'm not even sure if they, if you all, whoever, are going to provide for families to have two cars. It doesn't, it looks like there's only one parking space there, but I, I can't conceptualize that as well as you all. So the zoning change is not an issue with me, it's what they can do with it after you give them the zone change. So I hope there's somebody, and there again, I don't know how to ask this question, is there somebody that will oversee their plan and what quote unquote their plans are for 50 units and the drainage issue, pardon me, and the utilities maybe going underground would be even better? So I guess I'm a yes or a no, Jerry.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Sarah Ballcamp. I live on Shadland Drive here in Danville, and I had a question. I'll echo everything that Jackie has said, but my question is the, the water situation, and I was glad to hear Mr. Galloway mention the stormwater, because this is near Stream Land, right? It was named Stream Land for a reason, and we know that out there on that road, there has been flooding, not just this year when we've had a lot of rain, but other times. Just a few months ago, we had a gentleman here who had bought property, I can't think of the name of that little shopping area out there, but whatever it is.
Brook Cove.
Yeah, Brook Cove. He had some real concerns about that stream that runs back there, and I think it's the same stream that comes along on this property. Not only does it flood, but there is a lot of debris, trash, it's a problem. And I, I can't tell on that map where the stream is, but anyway, I just think that somebody needs to look at the, what is the elevation of this? I mean, is there, I know everybody's required to work out the stormwater problems, but I think that's a concern that we need to think about as we're doing development, especially this much density. And also, I'll just say, the duplexes that are there and, under the housing authority, those are very well kept. We're so fortunate in Danville to have the housing authority and, and the way these places are kept, and they stay full, and I just wonder how this is going to affect that. So I'm like Jackie, you know, you approved the moderate density in January, so it's hard to say we're at this point, but in any case, I think that you do have the authority to require some important changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Neil Eklund, Winterhawk Road. I have two issues I wish to raise. Mrs. Stigall brought up traffic concerns.
Mr. Galloway, you have not dealt with number of accidents that have occurred there, have you?
And I wonder if that might be a relevant issue. The second issue is something I'm personally more concerned with. You have 62, or however many, houses that you're going to put on this plot of land. You have one entrance, so if an emergency occurs in that development in any place, and, and there's, you know that's going to drag, pull people in, curiosity seekers and all that, that entrance is going to get blocked or possibly impeded. I would strongly encourage the developers to look at the possibility of having two entrances. The, the housing authority that's right next door even has two entrances to solve that problem, and I'm quite concerned that there be a second access. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Ann Ferguson, Kings Mill Road. I am not an engineer. I'm not a planner. I am a citizen concerned about development in Danville, in Boyle County. And I would say to you that I commend the engineering study, all of the charts, all of the graphs, all of the words. Good work. But I would also say to you, one picture is worth 1,000 words, graphs, charts.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, please.
My name's Debbie Tornell. I live at...
Debbie, please raise the microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
901 Shakertown Road. Mrs. Stigall is my landlady, and I have lived at the property this September for 10 years. I've actually had to pass my house going home several times, simply due to the fact of the speed, you know, coming down Shakertown Road, where I cannot gamble to take a left into my own property because of the people, you know, behind me not anticipating coming down that hill that I'm going to turn left to my house. I've had it, I don't know how many times I've had to pass my own house, turn around and come back, so we do to the speed coming down the hill. There have been fatal accidents right at that V intersection, but I really am coming at this from a totally different perspective. I may in fact be, relative to this audience, the only renter in this room, and as a renter, my concern is that this project is proposed to satisfy the community needs. I'm a senior citizen, I'm retired, I don't know what the rent is going to be, but I've heard an approximation of something around $1,200 a month, and there is no way on this earth I could afford $1,200 a month rent. What I also haven't heard, because it's still vague, and we talked about this the last time, are what the building materials are going to be, and I'm sure the building materials are going to be a huge factor in dictating what the rent is going to be. I think we all know that Boyle County as a whole is a median, median income is at or below poverty level. The average income for a four family is around $31,000 a month. Thirty one, I'm sorry, $31,000 annually. $31,000 median income for a family of four cannot afford a, a rent of $1,200 a month. So I would like to know what the, if Jackie, after 10 years, ever says, hey, Debbie, got to go, which you're never going to do that. I would, I would not be able to rent that, a property right next door to me. So I, I also happen to be a chairperson for a charity organization called Supes on Us through my church. We deliver about $2,000, $2,000 lunches per month. So I see a lot of renter in, income and people where their needs in terms of their options and availability are not going to be satisfied by the neighborhood of $1,200 a month rent. I would like to know as part of a contingency, what the median income is for this particular developer with this type of property, what the vacancy rate is, what the qualifications are to rent this property. If I had to pay somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, $4,000 for first months, last months, and a security deposit to rent this property, you know, I wouldn't qualify. What I think the community does need is more senior rental property. We have Arnold's, Arnold Towers, and basically we have, you know, Section 8 housing or assisted living. So I, I would like to see what the vacancy rate is, what the rent qualifications are to qualify to rent these properties are going to be, what the vacancy rate is in similar properties built by this developer, based on the incomes, the median incomes of those rental properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Tim Kitsch. I'm the executive director for the Housing Authority of Danville. So I'm very thankful to be here and listen and see this plan and how it's laid out. I'm coming, as I hear this and see this plan, my concern is more from a family point of view. So I have some young kids, and I'm thinking if I'm moving to this area of one-bedroom, two-bedroom units, where are my kids going to go? You know, when they go out to play, you've already heard that they're not planning on a playground, but there's nowhere for them to play except in the driveways. So that's a concern that I have in that aspect. I would think 30 to 40 units would be sufficient. You could have some play areas designated throughout the property. This is a small tract, but, and that was really with our Nichols Terrace site next door, that was the intention. When it was originally built, there was a playground in that middle island that has since been removed for insurance purposes, but that's still a large play area for kids. That back lot is, is utilized a lot by families for various, you know, events and things that we do as a housing agency. So that would be my one thing I would say about that property is, you know, if I'm a young family moving there, what are my kids going to do? There's, you know, it, it's a safety issue for me as I'm thinking about that. You know, whether you're talking 51, 67 units, whatever, that, that would be my major concern with it.
Thank you.
I have one more thing, Sarah. With regards to the parking, I thought, I mean, the front orientation to Shakertown, I think should be mandated, but I also thought by looking at the, this concept now, that there appears to be two parking places. One appears to be one in front and one in back. So if the front orientation is Shakertown Road, that doesn't matter if there's going to be parking in front of those houses as well. So where is the parking going to be facing Shakertown Road? So if the parking is in front of your front door, all you're going to see is a line of cars.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, we'll consider the public hearing closed. This time, the chair would recognize a motion to approve, disapprove, or table for further information.
I'll make a motion. I regret that these zone changes turned into telling people how to develop their property and what to do with it. That comes later. And there's, it's a private business. It's not a public business. They won't take a risk. That's up to them. People choose to live there, they do, or they don't. We're looking at this strictly as a zone change, and then they're going to have to come to us for the site plan that we can sift through these issues. But at this juncture, it's a zone change, and they've done everything we've asked them to do. I would like to make a motion to, for approval with conditions that, that the applicant has said that they would be willing to, to live with, and that would be the, limit the units to 51, orientate the front unit or units, however they may be, to face Shakertown Road, and, and provide guest parking. And I don't know about how we, you know, the guest parking rule. Now, they've got, on the conceptual plan, I think they've got 12 or 13 spots there. I don't know if it's proper for us to put a number on that, but adequate guest parking. They're going to have, I think, plenty of room, especially if that building does or does not exist, and, but if that would be agreeable to the rest of the commission, that would be my, my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Hendrick, do we need to add anything from a legal standpoint on the motion?
If Commissioner Baird would accept an additional finding that the proposal is consistent with adjacent uses and the character of the neighborhood, and that it promotes the comp plan goal of infill?
Yes.
And Suzie, you second that. Question, discussion on the motion? I just have a comment that we as a commission cannot dictate rental fees and rental costs and those kinds of issues. That's just a business risk that, that the developer takes, and if they want to charge $2,000 a month or $200 a month, that's obviously their choice. We, we have no, no interest in that whatsoever. It's just simply an issue or a risk that they take, and I just want to clarify that we, we don't in any way discuss those kinds of issues. That, that's totally their, their decision as any other private entity in, in the community does. So that's, just thought I'd make that comment. Anything else? Vince?
Yes, I agree with Jeff, and, but I do see all the, the moving parts that have to do with the neighborhood itself, and I think that the, the limit on the number of units is important. I think the... I think the playground space is important. We can't vote on it now, but I just -- I think that this commission, I'm not speaking for everybody but myself, are concerned with those. But we will get to discuss those in the future, I think, when you present your plan. And we can duke it out, so to speak, about things like that. But I mean, you know, the space, if there was more space, there might be space for some of these things and to make improvements with the groundwater, you know, because the more people there are, the tougher it is. So, I mean, I think we need to think about that as a long-range plan. What's going to happen to the rest of the property out there? I don't know. You know, in the future, because that's also has to be one of our concerns as a commission. So, I think we can approve, I mean, myself personally, I can approve this, but I would be watching carefully as to what was going on during the planning. And Jeff is exactly right about that we can't legislate costs and things of other people's businesses. We shouldn't, and things like that. But I think the concern of the builders will be to make it a good space and to try to do it within the cost that they're able to present a project like this in the community and hopeful that it'll -- that all of those things about cost of living and all those things are given some consideration, not only for the residents but for themselves. Because there aren't a lot of people that will -- I don't know what the rent will be. I don't think you do either. But I do think that a reasonable cost and having a compatible range of people living in the same area, different ranges, you know, so it's integrated with lots of different people. And that's all. But I agree with Jeff and, you know, about his plan to improve.
Any other comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none. By show of hands, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. All opposed? Motion passes.
Do we have a stand?
Okay. I didn't hear anything, so I didn't know. Okay. One abstention. Under new business advisory committee report, do we have -- I don't think we have anything. Personnel committee report? I would like to add that Lisa has been significantly out for a while due to an illness, and we want to publicly thank the fact that she is back and with us and appears to be regaining her health. And we're glad to have you back, Lisa. So, we'll put that under personnel report. But anyway, we are glad that you're feeling much better and back with us. Glad to see you. Budget committee report? Anything? Terry?
Yeah, we just have a second budget amendment. So, if you take the multicolored graph information sheet that's in your packet, we're just going to be talking to the two right-hand columns, which is FY '19 budget amendment number two. That's what we're talking about approving today and comparing it to the column next to it, which is FY '19 budget amendment number one, which we approved a couple of months ago. Again, this is this year's budget. This is not next year's budget. We're just making an amendment to this year's budget. So, I'm just going to highlight a few things. If you look under revenue and go down the lines 19 and 20, you'll see that there are no changes in revenue in this budget amendment, so nothing to talk about in the revenue. Everything we'll be just talking about will be under the commission expenditures. And anything where there's yellow highlighted in that final right-hand column, there's been a change. I'm not going to talk to all the changes, just a couple of them. And so, if you look at lines 23, 25, and 27, that have to do with the administrative assistance salary, the FICA, Medicare, and retirement, those are all being increased in the second budget amendment to recognize the salary increase and the impact of that that we gave Lisa a few months ago. And then if you look at line 25, that's the summer intern that we're adding to this budget amendment that wasn't in the prior -- that's, excuse me, line of --
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four is the summer intern. Yeah, that we're adding. And then down on line 38, Steve talked about the fact that dues and memberships are going up because of the QuickBooks thing. If you flip the page then and go over to lines 51 and 52, that's mainly just moving dollars around between our legal fees, whether or not we're attributing them to the planning commission or board of adjustment, just kind of aligning those dollars with where it's being spent as opposed to where we originally thought it was being spent. So, really no change in total dollars that much. It's just a realignment of those dollars. And so, if you go down to line of 69, you'll see that the total expenditures in this budget amendment are about $205,000 compared to last budget amendment, which was $194,000. So, total expenditures are up about $11,000. And then if you go to line of number 70, it's just looking at net income. And so, net income is down by about the same amount, of course, because we didn't change our revenue. So, net income is down from our prior budget amendment, but it's still above what we did the original budget base of. And so, that's the budget amendment that we're asking to approve, basically recognizing what expenditures we're going to have primarily due to a change in the administrative assistance salary and adding the summer intern.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Jeff moves. We approve.
Second.
Susie seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none. All in favor? No unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Yes.
Steve wants to talk briefly to the commission fees changes.
Yep. Sorry. Just answered a couple of questions. So, Terry explained the budget amendment. We are proposing another fee revision. And what's in yellow is the changes, and the budget committee looked this over. Let me kind of tell you what's happening on the bigger picture. The county, since the building inspector is now in our office, the county yesterday passed a new fee structure for the building inspector. So, as we're getting out of residential zoning permit fees, that's what's changed on here. They're off-the-box and agricultural fees. The county's streamlining their fees. So, you will no longer, if you build a single-family home, come and pay the planning commission for a zoning permit. You'll get a permit from the building inspector who's in our office. He's still a county employee. You'll pay him, and the new form has a box where the planning commission has a check option and can put notes on the building permit directly to the builder related to setbacks and other issues. So, our fees are streamlined and to tie in with the county's revised fees that were passed yesterday. There's no big ticket items on here. We now can do minor amendments for site plans, so we had to set a fee for that. We put in $100. We bumped up site plans just slightly, $70. They had an odd number. And as you know, our site plans now have a higher threshold. We're going to be doing bigger stuff. We're not doing small things any longer. So, we actually bumped site plans up slightly, $70. And then over there on zoning permits, that's the big one. We have other things now. We were billing at a square foot, always looking at buildings. But we have change of use. We've got parking lots. And we have paving-only things that we want to now start catching. And so, we had to set some fees for some minor things that are different kind of zoning permits as we move forward. All these would go in effect May the 1st and tie in with the county's new streamlined permitting fees, too.
And the maximum fee?
Oh, and the max fee on commercial, that was brought up. We charge 20 cents a square foot. I think I've mentioned to several of you guys that before on commercial and multifamily. For example, if we had a new, let's just hypothetically say we had a new grocery store come in at 100,000 square foot, that's a $20,000 check that would be paid to the planning commission to review a 100,000-square-foot building. That's not that intense of a review for us. We're looking at landscaping and parking. So, the budget committee thought going to a max fee in a commercial, industrial, residential, or multifamily setting is how we would move forward. $5,000 is all we would assess on any zoning permit. That's the cap, whether it's 20,000 or, you know, whatever triggers wherever hit 5,000. But to go ahead and have an unlimited cap and someone come into an 80,000-square-foot building and then thus charge 20 cents a square foot, that's a pretty big hit to commercial clients, multifamily clients, too. So, we're going to a max fee on commercial, multifamily, and industrial. And by the way, just for clarity, duplexes are considered a multifamily as far as we're concerned. If you're doing a whole series of duplexes or triplexes, fourplexes, that's multifamily. You're still -- we're still catching everything but single-family and agriculture now stays at Rusty's desk with our plan review underneath it with no fee. Glad to answer any other questions on the fee schedule.
Need a motion?
Motion. So moved.
Jeff moves. We approve.
Second.
Vince seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none. All in favor? No unanimous. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Does the fees for this meeting change?
Unless you turn a plat like that in again, there might be a $10 hit on that one.
I would land a hand.
I know you would.
I was remiss at the beginning in recognizing David Walden and his resignation also, and certainly want to appreciate the work David has done and the service to planning and zoning and to the community. And Lisa, I'd like to have that in the minutes also, that David was really a valuable member to the PNC Commission, and certainly want to thank him for his contribution and work that he did. Any other good for the order?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One addition for the minutes and record is that Commissioner Sleet was duly sworn in before the meeting.
Okay.
And Commissioner Kitchen likewise was sworn in for her first meeting in February.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any other good for the order? Hearing none. A motion to adjourn. Jim Mait, Susie seconds. All in favor? Thank you. We're adjourned.[1789.45]